It is 5:31, we're gonna call this regular city council meeting into session. And we're gonna start with Brandon's gonna lead us to the pledge of allegiance. Then we're gonna have the invocation and then we have a special presentation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On my Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Thank you. We have with us tonight Brian Davis from the Solid Rock Baptist Church who's gonna lead us in the invocation. You'll go over to the viewer of the microphone so we can get it on recording. Thank you, sir.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, Lord, we just thank you for this beautiful day. Father, how you washed over and protected all these here. Father, Father, we just thank you and give you all the glory of how you are over all things. Father, you're in control. Father, we just thank you for these that are sitting here tonight. Father, that are serving you in such a manner. Father, Father, we just ask that you just might guide their hearts and their minds, Father, as they discuss the matters that matter to our people here, our community, Father. Father, I just ask that you just might lead us, Father, that we just would look to you for guidance. Father, just forgive us, we will fail you in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Brian. Appreciate that. First item on the agenda tonight is something pretty exciting. A bunch of girls and coaches and parents come on in here. We're gonna line them up. I'm gonna do it from back here behind the microphone so we can get on recording. It's just ladies. Excuse me, I'm sorry. Ladies. There you go. My social coach here. Come on in here. We are a city that on all of our city signs coming in the city that says we're a city of champions. And you see in front of you the champion Honeybee Soccer Team for the Class 4A State Title. They won in April 19th. And I know everybody here. It was a special event. And if you're a parent who has a child who's gone through school here, you know what it's like, especially if your child competes in sports or any other kind of extracurricular activities when they get a special recognition. And this is a really special recognition. So we've asked the coaches and the girl, the ladies, young ladies to be here today. And so I'm gonna read for you a resolution that the city is wanting to present tonight. Then I'm gonna ask for a motion in a second. But let me read it first, if you don't mind. Whereas the Stevensville High School Honeybee Soccer Team won this Class 4A State Title on April 19th, 2019. And whereas this is the Honeybee Soccer Team's second title in three years with a 23, 1, and 2 record. And whereas the accomplishments of this team required determination, sacrifice, skill, and dedication. Now therefore, be it resolved that the efforts and achievements of this Stevensville Honeybee Soccer Team are hereby recognized and applauded. And we, the undersigned, which will be the city council, on behalf of all citizens of the city of Stevensville, express our admiration and gratitude to these team members and to head coach, the head coach, assistant head coaches and trainers and the Honeybee Soccer Team here. There's actually 30 names on the team?
Twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine. And we have most of them here tonight. And this is passed and approved on the 7th day of May 2019. And I'll entertain a motion.
I would love to make a motion to consider approval of resolution number 2019 R-16 recognizing the Stevensville Honeybee's State Championship Soccer Team.
And I second that motion.
Yeah, we have a motion by Brandon and a second by Carla. And so therefore, we're gonna proceed to vote. All in favor of this resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign opposed. Motion passes unanimously. We want to congratulate you ladies and the coaches and the Stevensville. Coach, you wanna say something to everybody, talk about your team a little bit? We'll give you a few, couple of minutes.
Sure. You know, this team going into it, we knew they were a special group with everything that they've done in 2017, 2018. And you know, whenever you have a group like that, it's very easy to kinda be complacent and just know that you're good. But these girls came in, they worked hard, you know, throughout the entire season. We had one little hiccup the entire year. And I'm extremely proud of them. Losing a couple, several seniors that will be extremely missed. But have a good core coming back and extremely excited about what we have coming. So we definitely appreciate you guys, the city council and the city of Stevensville. If any of you were able to come to our game in Georgetown, the support from the city was unbelievable. I mean, through all the games, I would think that we put as many people in the stands as we could, as anybody. So we always thank the city of Stevensville and all the people here and glad we could hold up to our name as the city of champions. And we did bring you guys something. You guys recognize this every time we do pretty well. I don't know where you'll put it or what you'll do with it, but we have a Collins Ball. We have a 2019 State Championship Ball with all the girls' signature on it that we would like to mention.
And here are plenty of ladies. The hard part is there's only one. You gotta stay at the top. It means you gotta keep winning, keep winning. You know, we have a long history here of both cowgirls, cowboys, soccer players, volleyball players, football players, and all the other sports. And so you girls have really inspired us to do a good job. Thank you very much for what y'all done for Stevensville, Texas.
Coach, can you crowd into the picture too? Mr. Mayor, could they borrow that soccer ball for the picture?
Come on, right here.
That's great. Everybody be real, real still, big smile, one, two, three. Again, one, two, three. One more time. Okay, girls, big smile. Okay, thank you.
Good job ladies.
Thanks, sir.
I appreciate you coming.
Thank you, Coach. Good job.
Thank you.
I've got one for last year. I'm gonna have to go buy it at the Zonta Club auction again. The last time they won, I bought.
Thank y'all. I have another item here on the agenda that's not on the agenda, I just wanna make a comment tonight. City of Stevensville, along with CETA, has been participating in an internship program with Charleston State University. We've had a lot of good experience with that, both at the city level but also at CETA particularly. And we want to thank Dr. Chris Chow for his role in the program as well as Dr. Nate Heller who placed Madison Miller with us. And she's with CETA right now. This is the end of her experience with CETA. And I can tell you that, you know, Ashley keeps the place together. Jeff, I'm not sure about with your dancing and singing. But we know for sure that Madison is what made it tick over there. We really appreciate that. Every time, if you ever showed up there, she was there. She had a smile on her face and she was always, she worked a little hard. So we appreciate what she did very much. The CETA Board of Directors and executive staff want to thank Madison for her time, devotion, and commitment to CETA during her internship. We'd like to recognize Madison's involvement in a variety of different projects. Stevensville Day at the Capitol Building, that was a big deal. Ford Hood Workforce Placement Initiative Campaign. Data research for industry-specific needs and other economic development-related projects and coordinating documents for the Board of Directors of Stevensville Economic Development Authority. Wish her the best of luck as she sets off to her future career. I think it's gonna be in marketing. We'll put it on, we'll put on national news right now. We have, if you wanna get a good marketing person, here's your call. If you wanna come take your phone number up here, well, or email, we'll get people to send you some applications. Thank you very much and good luck in your future. Dr. Chow, thanks for so much for having her participate in that. And we have a whole lot more need for that as well. Thank you very much. Okay, we're gonna go on, get on with our agenda. And the first item we're gonna do is the National Small Business Week proclamation. Let me read that to you here. Whereas America's progress has been driven by pioneers who think big, take risks, and work hard. And whereas from the storefront shops that anchor Main Street to the high-tech startups that keep America on the cutting edge, small businesses are the backbone of our economy and the cornerstones of our national promise. And whereas small business owners and Main Street businesses have energy and passion for what they do. And whereas when we support small businesses and marketplace trust, we create a community of trustworthy businesses and set a standard, and set standards for marketplace trust. Whereas because of this country's 28 million small businesses, create nearly two out of every three jobs in our economy, we cannot resolve ourselves to create jobs and spur economic growth in America without discussing ways to support our entrepreneurs. And whereas the National Small Business Week has been celebrated for every year since 1963 to highlight the programs and services available to entrepreneurs through government agencies and non-government agencies like our Better Business Bureau, the leaders in advancing marketplace trust. Whereas the city of Stevensville supports and joins with Better Business Bureau in this national effort to help America's small businesses by encouraging best business practices and celebrating marketplace role models so that small businesses owners can continue to do what they do best, create jobs, help our economy, and ensure that our communities remain as vibrant tomorrow as they are today. Therefore, I, Duxtonville Mayor, Stevensville, Texas, do hereby proclaim May 5th through May the 11th, 2019 National Small Business Week. Say thank you very much. We have some, we'll present this to somebody here a little bit later. Thank you very much. It is the driver of Stevensville, Texas. Next item, we're gonna move to citizens' business, citizen budget request. We have one request. Cindy Stafford. We'll let you get up and. Oh, you need your thing.
Well, they got a skew.
How many years did you keep us straight?
Pardon?
How many years did you keep us straight up here?
Twenty-three.
Who's counting?
Yes, James said that I've probably spent more time in this room than most people have spent in prison.
That may be true.
It felt like. Honorable Mayor and City Council, my name is Cindy Stafford. My address is 2969 FM 914 Stevensville, Texas. And I'm here tonight just to place this on the record. And for the record, and on behalf of the city of Stevensville retirees, I'm requesting that Stevensville City Council reinstate the cost of living adjustments to its retirees. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Cindy. Are there any other budget requests? Here now, we'll go on to general business, or general citizen discussions. So anybody wants to come up and address the city council. Here now, we'll proceed to the next item. Consider approval for administrative services agreement with Public Management, Inc., for the CBDG FAST grant. And we're gonna turn that over to who's gonna make that presentation.
I guess it's me.
There you go.
Mr. Mayor, members of the, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. As you're aware, we are applying for the FAST grant, which is fire truck, ambulance, and special, service truck grant through the State Department of Agriculture. It's actually a CDPG grant. Part of the requirement is that we contract with a grant administrator. We have examined, we've requested, made requests of three grant application and administration services. We received two. We received one from Public Management. We also received one from G.A. Trailer and Associates. A committee of Mr. Nix, Chief Chu, Karen Wilkerson, and myself reviewed both applications. Both companies are very reputable. Both companies have a significant amount of experience. However, excuse me, Public Management came out as the number-one company on all four scoring sheets. And as such, Mr. Mayor's staff respectfully recommends the approval of the contract with Public Management. The cost for this is 16% of the grant, or $35,000. That amount is set by the CDPG program. Both bids were the same amount.
Any discussion?
Will the grant cover that cost?
Yes, ma'am.
I want you to just remind the citizens about what we're applying for and how much our match will be.
Yes, sir. The grant is an unexpected grant program from the federal government. What it will do is it, as the grant says, it'll buy fire trucks, ambulances, and special or service trucks. We are applying for a Type 6. Here comes Jimmy. He can explain it in greater detail than I can.
We are applying for a Type 6 brush truck, which is one notch bigger than the Tifmus truck that we got on the grant. We're applying for an ambulance to replace the ambulance at the downtown station, a heart monitor to equip that ambulance, a... My mind went blank.
Four SCBA units and tanks.
Four SCBA and a power cot, or another cot. That's a, cots now for these ambulances are about a $40,000 purchase when we're applying for one of those.
So total value of those?
About a half a million dollars.
About a half million bucks. What is our match on that?
Five thousand dollars.
Five thousand dollars.
You can't get a better return on your investment?
I hope not.
I'd love to have that kind of return on my money. I appreciate that, Jimmy. So as a matter of fact, I want to say thank you to the Texas Department of Agriculture for this, particularly Sid Miller and his help in making sure that we're on this application process. And so, thanks a lot. All right, I'll entertain a motion. Or is there any other discussion? I'm sorry. All right, I hear a motion to approve the interlo, excuse me, the administrative services agreement with Public Management, Inc.
So moved.
And we have Mark has made a motion to approve. And Alan has seconded it. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Same sign opposed. Motion passes. Thank you very much.
Thank y'all very much. Jake McDevitt with Public Management. I've spoken to the chief about this program very briefly. Hopefully, we'll be able to get the application finalized and submitted. Looking forward to helping the city with this project.
Thank you.
Get them. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is the interlocal agreement with Stevensville Type B Economic Development Authority. Jeff, do you wanna make a presentation on that?
Actually, I wanted to.
Are you gonna let the chair do that? Oh, one more. No. Well, the interlocal agreement, someone who's at the board meeting. Yeah, that's y'all's. There you go. Chair? There you go.
We had our special called meeting on Friday, May 3rd, to consider entering into an interlocal agreement with the city of Stevensville to participate in the tax increment reinvestment zone number one. Our entire board was present. We reviewed a participation agreement that if you do not, do you have a copy in your packets? I'm not familiar. And well, I'll give you the nuts and bolts on it then. We are mirroring the term that you approved in the 25-year TIRS district with 100% of our sales tax receipts that we collect to go into that TIRS for the duration of that or until you cancel it, if you cancel it sooner, when that, when any programs are paid off in there. It was passed unanimously through the CETA board, and I would be happy to entertain any questions that you may have.
If I have any questions?
There was something in my ear, at 100%? Is that?
Of the CETA.
Yes.
One-eighth of a cent that we collect, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Here now.
Shelby, I guess I'm not, I'm not understanding that. If y'all are gonna contribute 100%, what does that leave y'all to operate on?
100% within that TIRS zone, Mr. Nix. Sales tax collections within the defined area.
I'm sorry, I misunderstood. My ear didn't pick that up.
You saw a much bigger dollar sign.
I thought, wow.
At the incremental amount, yes.
I'm sorry. Thank you.
Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor, move it. We approve the interlocal agreement with Stevensville Type B Economic Development Authority for their participation in the tax increment. Reinvestment zone number one.
Second.
Mark makes the motion. Carla seconds it. Any further discussion? Here now, proceed to vote. All in favor, say aye. Same sign opposed. Motion is approved. Okay, we're going to now do something we'll do periodically, is we're going to adjourn from the regular city council meeting and enter into the tax increment financing District One meeting, which is a separate issue here. So we're gonna ask two of our new members of the board to come participate. And we're gonna, Stacy and Alan, agreed to step down for a moment. Hey, I wanna let our specialist here talk a little bit about what we're agreeing to tonight, what we're here to do tonight.
And just to clarify, you've called to order the TIRS board meeting?
Yes, we're calling, we are calling it to order. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
I guess I said that in the, I should've said that on the tail end of that first part, yes. We are now in the call-in to order the tax increment financing District One meeting.
Thank you. Thank you to the TIRS board for having me here today. We're here to present the project and financing plan related to TIRS number one for the city of Stevensville. As you may recall, the creation process related to a TIRS outlines two main documents, the creation ordinance and the TIRS project and financing plan. When the TIRS was created as an exhibit to the creation ordinance, there was a preliminary project and financing plan. The creation ordinance, which was approved on April 25th, had five key elements. It had the boundary, the term, the TIRS board, which is all of you sitting here today, the city participation, and as I mentioned, that preliminary project and financing plan. Any additional taxing entities which would like to participate in the TIRS is set by separate interlocal agreement, which was approved tonight, a few minutes ago. And then after that creation and after the interlocal agreements have been approved, we can move on to finalizing the project and financing plan, which will be presented to you today, followed by being presented to city council. Just to go over the contents of the project and financing plan, it outlines the boundaries, which you can see here are on the west side of town, generally bound by West Washington Street and Rita Avenue, and it's approximately 31 acres. Within those 31 acres, based on information that was provided to us by developers and also by the city staff and the CETA staff, we put together what we think are realistic projections of real estate development that is going to come online over the next several years. For the purposes of the project and financing plan, we separated it into two phases. Phase one, which is shaded in blue, and phase two, which is shaded in green there. You can see overall, throughout those two phases, we are estimating that approximately 250, around 250,000 square feet of retail product will come online. Based on our assumptions and looking at comparables, we then attributed a taxable value to that real estate development that we then projected that would come onto the tax rolls again throughout the life of the TIRS. The participation of the TIRS that's listed in the project and financing plan is the city participating at 100% of the real property tax revenue incremental, 100% of the city sales tax revenue, again incremental, over the tax base here, which is 2019, and then 100% of CETA's sales tax, again incremental, over the 2019-year base, which is when the TIRS was created. Based on those real estate development assumptions that we put together, coupled with the participation levels, we projected that the TIRS over the 25-year life of the term would, and I don't, I can't see that quite clearly, excuse me, would produce total taxes for all taxing entities of approximately 50 million, with the participation of just city of Stevensville and economic development, which would, is the CETA participation of 24 million, leaving the net benefit to all the taxing entities at just over 26 million, again over the life of the term, assuming that the real estate development projections that we have come to fruition. What that revenue then produces, that 24 million of TIRS participation, what we then did is we listed in the project and financing plan, we associated that 24 million with a list of, a menu of eligible expenses that per the state statute, TIRS revenue can be spent on. We assigned different percentages to the line items, which you can see here range from water facilities and improvements, sanitary sewer, stormwater, transit, street and intersection improvements, open space, economic development grants, and administrative costs, which have to be included per statute. It is important to note that these are just estimates. Any project that comes forward requesting TIRS revenue to be utilized for their project would have to go first. There's two mother mayis, first to the TIRS board, which would then either recommend or deny the request, but then it would go on to city council for final approval or denial of the request. So this is just a menu of eligible expenses that a particular project could request TIRS revenue to be used for. So the next steps, city council has created the ordinance, has created the TIRS, excuse me, CETA participation was set in their May meeting, and the interlocal agreement was approved today. What we're doing right now is the TIF board approval, which we recommend for approval today. And then following the TIRS board meeting would be a city council, city council approval of the project and financing plan by separate ordinance. At this time, I'll entertain any questions.
Questions?
Has the county opted into participating, or are they planning to?
That would be set to separate interlocal agreement, and I think those conversations are ongoing.
They are.
Okay, good.
Any other questions?
So the assumptions that you've included in this, those are just y'all's best estimates based on experience? Or is it specific to this area, the $200 sales tax per square foot?
That's specific to this area. Using, we received some input from the developer that is looking at this particular area based on what they are projecting, what tenants are gonna go in there. But we also did our conservative best effort to measure those estimates based on what we know to be market.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
Other questions? Yes, sir.
A request for funding will come to the board first. If the board denies it, does it still go to council? Or does the board have to approve it first before council considers it?
It would go to council regardless.
Regardless, okay.
Anyone else?
So to that point, if it's not approved by the board and it goes to council, are there any, is there a supermajority, any special voting requirements, or?
No, not beyond any typical motion.
Any other questions? Here now, I guess we proceed to vote then. Someone needs to make a motion then.
Yes, sir.
To approve the TIF financing plan as presented.
I'll make the motion to approve the TIF financing plan as presented.
I'll second.
Carla made the motion. Mark seconded it. Mark, you're being active tonight. No, 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 I'm gonna ask you to do another one here in a minute. Any further discussion? If the tax increment financing board will vote then, I'll proceed to vote. All in favor, say aye. Same sign opposed. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. We're going to then adjourn the tax increment financing District One Board of Directors meeting. Thank y'all for coming and participating. And reconvene at the regular city council meeting. And I'll entertain a motion to approve the ordinance, which will be ordinance number 2019, oh, what?
15.
2000, oh, 2019, oh, 15.
Salute.
Mark makes the motion. We approve the resolution 2019, oh, 15. Second?
Second.
Brandon seconded it. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Same sign opposed. Motion passes. We now have a TIF. That's a big deal. It is a big deal. I want to say thank you for bringing the information this night. You've always been very professional and soulless on the idea. Now, we get to get the numbers up. Oh, you did a great job. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is Tourism and Visitors Bureau Committee. I'm gonna turn it over to Carla, Trussell, Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tonight, we just have one request for funds, and that's from Sundown on the Square. And they told me they'd be here, but they're not. They requested 5,000, which is the same amount they requested last year. And that came forward with a positive recommendation from the committee. So I just need a motion for us to approve 5,000 dollars.
Okay, any discussion? Here now, Carla makes the motion. We approve the application for Sundown on the Square for 5,000 dollars. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Sherry makes a second. Carla, motion. Sherry makes a second, Carl motion, made a motion. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign opposed, motion passes. Sundown on the Square is a really big deal in Steenville, Texas. I appreciate y'all doing that. Next item, planning and development services committee, Mr. Huckabee.
Mr. Mayor, we had just one item on the agenda here, and it's just a discussion point. The planning and development services committee met on April 23rd to discuss a partnership for installation of sidewalks for the KSRS development, extending all the way to Harbin Drive. The committee unanimously agreed to draft an agreement to partner with KSRS to extend those sidewalks, and told the, told staff to enter into those negotiations, so, and no action was taken at that time, so.
And that is all it. Thank you. Mr. Huckabee, I always wanna make a comment here that I asked about, you know, some of the issues going on tonight, and what Karen said was, it's not gonna be Jeremy's night tonight, so therefore a big short council meeting, 'cause Jeremy's not making a presentation, so I appreciate that very much.
You're welcome.
Yeah, we're not, but you're not gonna dance, okay. Next item, let's go to finance committee, Mr. McClinton.
Well, this may be where we hit the snag, sir.
Okay, well, I tell you, I tell you what, we're gonna, what we're gonna do is, we have a council member who wants to be here, and so we're gonna pass yours by, if we can come back to it, is that all right? I'm sorry, don't make it, don't make it.
I'm so offended.
Thank you very much. You know, that was intentional. We're gonna, we're gonna go to Parks and Leisure, and then we're gonna go to the monthly budget report, then we're gonna come back, because Mr. Harrison said he wanted to be here. Okay, next item, we're gonna go then to the Parks and Leisure Services Committee, Sherry Zachary.
Yes, we had our committee meeting, and we're, it was regarding the rec center and the phases of possibly rehabilitating it, and the discussion ended up with a recommendation to the staff to pursue, is Jim here? To pursue further details on that. There was no action taken.
Okay. Thank you very much. Next item is, we're gonna go to monthly budget report. Monica, give you this presentation. And I gave Jeremy a hard time, very professional gentleman, also have a professional report every month, thank you very much.
This is the report for our financial statements ending March 31st, 2019. We're six months into our fiscal year, so our target percentage is about 50%. For our property tax, we received 79,000 in March, which is 286,000, or a 5.06% increase over the funds collected through March of last year. For sales tax, we received 492,000 in March, which is 118,000 over our target budget through March, and we received 227,000, or 7.44% more than the funds received through March of last year. In hot funds, we received 170,000 in our hotel occupancy tax revenue through March. It's a 24% increase over the 138,000 that we received last year. We've spent 138,000 in hot funds through March, as compared to 140,000 last year. These numbers do include revenue that we've taken in so far, and expenditures for Muba Fest, and also our interest income. The target budget for operating revenue is 12.7 million. We've received 15.2 million through March, which is 2.46 million over our budget, and this is really because of our property taxes, which of course were due by January 1st, and delinquent if not paid by January 31st. So our big checks are in December and January. The target budget for our operating expenditures is 10.1 million. We've expended 9 million through March, which is 1.1 million under our budget. The operating revenue received last year was 14.4 million, as compared to the 15.2 million this year, which is about a $795,000 increase due to our property taxes, our sales taxes, and our investment interest. The operating expenditures last year were 8.8 million. The current year is 9 million, which is about a $210,000 increase. Our additional expenditures have been our balance scorecard training, our salary survey, the special election, outside professional fees, maintenance, we did some child safety grants this year that we didn't do last year, wages and advertising in the hot fund, and wages and economic development programs in our CETA fund. For our new program, the laser fish upgrade has been done and paid for. The police Tahoe's and the flatbed and crane for the collection units 136 has all been purchased. Any questions?
Any questions? Mark?
Good to go, like to see the positive numbers. But usually you say, when you talk about revenue, there's a big but coming. Is there a but?
No.
Operating revenue is 12.7, we've received 15.2, and usually you say but.
No, that's usually on expenditures, 'cause when we're under, I tell you not to get real excited, because we'll get there when, you know, spending our budget, so. We just kinda start out slow, and then there's a rush towards the end, so. Don't get real excited about that 1 million under, not yet anyways.
Any other questions? Thank you, Monica, for your report. Steenville Economic Type B, Steenville Type B Economic Development Authority update. I guess you can dance if you want to. It's on television, by the way.
Oh, I like that.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, counsel. I do have a few things. I normally start off, as you do know, with a few this day in history moments, and I'm going to do it a little differently this time. I am going to give you a few, but I'm going to use them in a little different manner. The first one is that it was on this day in 1914 that the US Congress established Mother State, so I would like to just start off mine by saying thank you to all the moms, not only in our community, but across the country that have meant so much to all of us and have really brought us to where we are now, so I think that was an important date. And a couple of others, I just want you to store in the back of your mind, because we'll use them again later. One, it was on this day in 1946, and this will mean absolutely nothing to you right now, but the Tokyo Telecommunications Engineering Group was founded with 20 employees in 1946, on this day. And on 19, and on this day in 1970, the long and winding road becomes the last American release for the Beatles. Just kinda keep that in mind. I'll reference those again in a little bit. First, I want to talk about today, advancing the bioeconomy. We have previously discussed efforts to incorporate diverse pathways for economic success in Stephenville. Per the city's request, we targeted resources toward increasing revenues through advanced ad valorem and sales taxes. There's several million, in fact, I think we've already announced over 46 million dollars in projects so far this year. In addition to significant additional announcements we will make throughout the course of this fiscal year begin the process of adding much-needed resources to the city's bottom line, without negatively impacting our fellow citizens. Another project we're working on right now addresses some industrial needs of the area. You might recall our recent discussions concerning biochar. This effort is part of a bigger initiative of advancing the bioeconomy, and we have positioned ourselves as a regional partner in attracting not only a viable business to our area, but also to be a potential hub for the entire supply chain and supportive service business sector. If successful, Steenville will realize significant growth in wealth-producing job availability for years to come. Our next steps in this process include the following four items over the remainder of the next several months. First, stockpiling our regional resource assessments, which include everything from feedstock and infrastructure inventories. Secondly, regional capacity needs assessment, which includes accessing and assessing federal and state resources for this project. It also includes finding our needs for infrastructure development, potential creation of a biomass depot, potential research and development needs, as well as grant opportunities. The third item is supply chain needs. If we're gonna build an entire industry, we wanna look at the supply chain piece. For example, what is available or missing to move biomass from the field to the market, and then secondly, workforce availability. And the fourth area is industry recruitment. This will be a national outreach that'll include everything from renewable energy to biopproducts, to precision agriculture, and ancillary services. Meetings are ongoing, including one that we're having just this week, as well as all over the course of the year. It's a slow process, it'll probably take as much as 24 months to put into place. A grant application with the US Department of Agriculture has already been approved, and the effort is gaining traction at all levels of business and industry, as well as in government. Steenville will be, potentially, if completed appropriately, will be the Texas capital for what will be recognized nationally as the center of the biomass industry cluster. Earlier I mentioned, if you remember, the Tokyo Telecommunications Engineering Group. They started with 20 people 73 years ago. Now that is Sony Corporation, and they have 117,000 employees with 77 billion in revenue annually, and 8.3 billion in net revenue, that started, much like we're starting right here. They started an industry cluster many years ago. Our job is to do something like this, to think farther ahead. May or may not ever become something like Sony, but it is starting an entire industry cluster. So beyond just the nice things that we like to land on a daily, monthly, yearly basis, this is something that we're going, is going to be ongoing to where we can land, not only a primary business, but its supply chain all the way throughout our region, and continue that job creation and wealth-producing jobs. As far as sales taxes, in a short, a few short weeks, believe it or not, I will have been here for a year, which has been the slowest year for you, mayor, I'm sure, the fastest year for me, but we've watched the economy continue to grow and strengthen in our area, jobs remain filled, businesses are making their way through their journey with renewed confidence. Following Monica's lead on what she talked about with finance, sales tax receipts in the city during that 11 months are up 447,000 dollars over the same time period the previous year. And the exciting part is that Steenville continues to draw significant interest from investors and other developers from across the nation. Coming up later this month, Mr. Barnes will join our team as we go to the ICSC recon event, where we will continue that approach to making our connections and trying to continue to find developers that are interested in communities like ours, with the kinds of products and other kinds of investments that they might have in our area. We'll be doing that later in May. Following up in my June report, I'm gonna give you a year-to-date kind of report for the last year, and show you what all is exciting to come. Hopefully, we'll have a few announcements between now and then, and that'll make it even more exciting. And then finally, I'd like to just make a report, I know Mr. Harrison's not here, but this one is specific to Mrs. Zachary and to Mr. Harrison. Seat in the city have made, as we said, many positive announcements, and have many more over the coming months. However, as you leave office, I want to thank you for your service, remind you of your role in those new developments, some of that role, for example, what you guys did earlier with the approval of the TIF, what an important piece to our economic development puzzle. It's our hope that as you leave that seat, you will leave knowing that you, that the time you have put into strengthening our economy and economic development collaboration has paid and will continue to pay off, it'll pay dividends to all the citizens of Stephenville. Just as the long and winding road may have been released 49 years ago today, it, like you, continues to impact people every day, and we just look forward to celebrating years from now, the decisions you've made over the course of time here on service to the council. I want to thank you for those, you're, we have gratitude towards you, we thank you for your service.
No, and we appreciate it, thank you very much.
That's all. Any questions for me, Mike?
Any question for Jeff? Thank you, Jeff. I wanna make a comment about that one year, but your evaluation's just coming up, right?
Okay, thank you much, Jeff, appreciate it. All right, well, Mr. Harris can't make it back to the meeting in time, he was hoping to be here for the next item, so we're gonna turn this over to Mark McClinton. Mark McClinton, your finance committee report.
Finance committee met 23 April, all members were present. There were three items on the agenda, two were action items, one was not. First item on the agenda was a proposal for a facility feasibility study, and this was to, it's really a look at the existing city-owned, municipal-owned facilities, take a look at those and see what, what we can do with them based on their occupancy, the way they're used now, the way that they're gonna be needed to be used in the future, and so this is a facilities needs assessment, really. The, and this, this started with the architecture firm that was working down at the rec hall, looking at possibly air conditioning that building, and it was requested of them that they simply expand the look, and that this is what came out of that. It's about a $16,000 project to do the facilities needs assessment, they'll look at all the city-owned facilities, and then come back with some recommendations as to whether we need to spend some money on those buildings, that we need to look at something new, and so on and so forth. The $16,000 is available to us because of a road that was proposed and budgeted to be built in the West End Cemetery, that's no longer because of ongoing development, is no longer needs to be spent, so we have that money available, so there's no impact here. This did come from the finance committee with a positive recommendation, and Mr. Barnes, if there's anything you'd like to add to that, or Monica, you feel free.
I believe you summed it up very well, sir.
Okay. So you wanna do them one at a time, Doug?
Let's do them one at a time, if you don't mind, Mark.
Well, I'll go ahead and make the motion that we accept the proposed facility needs assessment with the Hobbs Architectural Firm as it's been presented.
Mark makes the motion, and Alan seconds it. Any discussion? Proceed to vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign opposed?
No.
Oh, we have one motion, well, against. Okay, Carla voted against, okay. Motion passes, next item.
Next item, let's go ahead and knock the, the other one out. We, the finance committee was given a preliminary introductory cursory glance at the, at the pay study, and that's all it was, was just an introduction. There's a meeting that'll be set up on the 23rd of May, a workshop session where we can delve into that pay study in much more detail. I think that the committee members, other council members were invited to put their questions together and get those to Mr. Barnes, so we could forward them to the, to MAG, and so they would be, they would be ready to answer those questions when we had the workshop session. So that was a non-action item, an introduction of the pay study.
I wanna thank Alan for being forthright with those guys. All I can do.
Last item, Mr. Mayor, it's got a lot of moving parts to it, it is, and we went over most of them in pretty good depth during the finance committee meeting, and this has to do with water and wastewater fees. I think Ms. Harris has a presentation for that, so I'm gonna turn this meeting over to her, so she can refresh our memories.
Included in your packet are, is some information, so I've been here about two and a half years now, and the, the last two years, when, when we've talked about water and sewer rates, Ms. Tressel has kindly brought up the surcharges, and has talked about, we need to do something, and she's not the only citizen that feels that something needs to be done about the surcharges. So what we started doing is, we looked at it, and 84% of our accounts are residential, and in fiscal year 1718, for, a little over 4,000 of those residential accounts paid surcharges, which is about 63% of our total, total accounts that we service. In 1617, it was just under 4,000, so it was about 63% of our residential accounts paid surcharges. We looked at what revenue we earned from our surcharges in the last two fiscal years, and they're kinda at opposite ends. In fiscal year 1617, we, we had a lot more rain, so there was about 558,000 dollars in revenue, and, and then, I'm sorry, in 1617, and then in 1718, we didn't get our rain till the end of the summers, when the majority of it came, so there was about 720,000 dollars worth of revenue. So if we completely did away with the surcharges, we would have to come up with somewhere it's about between 500 and, and, you know, 700,000 dollars to replace that revenue. So you only have a couple choices to do that, is to increase your, your base rates, or to, you know, absorb it all, or to do it all through your, per thousand gallons using charges, to do it that way. One thing that we did look at is the, what we call the non-residential irrigation accounts, or basically our, our commercial sprinkler systems. If, there are three tiers of our surcharges. The first one is, once you go above 12,000, up to 25, you pay an extra dollar per thousand gallons. Then when you go over 25, up to 50, you pay an extra $3 per thousand gallon, and then above 50,000, you, you pay an extra $4, $4 per thousand gallons, and this is our May through September, it's our summer watering, you know, time that people are watering the yards. So if we added those commercial sprinkler systems into the calculations, and, and had them start paying just like the residential customers would, we could do away with that 12, that first tier, and we, which would take our, our commercial, our residential customers, that about 42% of them, so we would drop from about 60-something percent to about 42% of those residential customers would, would stop paying the surcharges. And then we would, it would get us anywhere between 50 to 100,000 dollars worth of, worth of additional revenue, so we would be able to keep our revenue the same, and possibly earn a little bit of extra money by adding those commercial customers on there. The reason why I'm saying generally about is because when people start getting charged more, I do anticipate that some of those commercial customers will reduce back some of their usage when that happens, so, you know, it will impact the revenue as well. So, you know, it will impact the revenue as well. And of course, the question for everybody is like, why do we need to do this? Well, we have over 53 miles of deteriorating clay sewer pipes in our ground, and when they fail, we have sanitary sewer overflows. We provided some cute little pictures for you. But in May of 2016, our council voted to increase our per-thousand-gallon water rate 20 cents. This was to be one of four increases over four years, and the reasoning behind it was to fund the existing improvements to our existing infrastructure, to take care of the, the clay pipes and things of that nature, the aging infrastructure. And then in May of 2018, we voted again to do the same thing for sewer. This was the first of four such increases for the same reason, to fund improvements to our existing infrastructure. So if we increase the water per-thousand-gallon fee from 20 cents to 455, this, this year would be the fourth of the, of four. And then, and if we do the sewer from, it would take it from 370 to 390, this would be the second of the four of these increases. This is going to generate approximately $140,000 of revenue per year for our water and 104 for our sewer. These funds can continue to be dedicated to replacing existing infrastructure, such as our clay sewer pipelines. We have a, an opportunity with TechSta to replace the water and sewer lines on, under Graham Avenue. When they redo that street, it will save us some money by doing it when they do it, so we won't have to tear up a street that they just lay. But that cost is about $2 million. We also have maintenance that's needed at our treatment plant, such as the repairing, replacing aerator basin number two shafts, and it is for about 120,000. Rehabilitating the water chlorine treatment system for 33,000, and rehabilitating the automatic backwash filter system for about 33,000. And looking at our, our water and sewer fees, because when I was hired, we talked about doing rate studies and things of that nature. So I sat down and looked at all of our costs for our fiscal year 201718, and I took all of our costs and we split them up between what things that we would consider to be fixed costs and things that are variables. So the more usage we have in our system, the, the more things cost. And then there's some things that it doesn't matter, really, how our usage varies, those costs are going to be pretty much the same. So we split it and looked at that. And when I did that, I discovered that our average base fee, when you take all of our connections together, should be about $12.97 per user. Right now, the, the base fee for water is about $11 for a residential. It depends on the size of the meter that you have. It does go up with the, the larger meters. Right now, it is costing us, in fiscal year 1718, $6.32 per thousand gallon to produce the water. And if you take out, and you're just looking at your variable, it's $5.08. So that's considerably less than, than what we currently charge. I did the same study for our sewer. Our average base fee per month should be about $24.36 per connection that we have. Obviously, there's no way that we can go from $9.50 to $24, so I just did the, the $1.50. And it cost us $5.98 per thousand gallons of treated wastewater. Right now, we're at 390, or 370, and it would go to 390. Increasing the $1.50 per, on the base rate for your water and sewer, this money could be utilized to, to take care of additions to our system, for things for the future. You know, the habit has been, and this, this, this is standard in government, is we, we never want to increase rates, we want to keep everything as cheap as we can, and then when something happens and we need to do something, we go out and we go out and we borrow money. It's not always at the best time, and it's not always at the best rate, because we have to do it now. And what we're trying to do is set us up where we're making plans and trying to come up with funding sources, so that when the time comes, we're prepared. And instead of having to go out and do a rush to borrow money, we have some funds set aside or at least have a start to get what we need. Increasing the, the dollar, the base rates of $1.50 would generate $150,000 per year of revenue for water and 110 per year for sewer. The things that we can utilize this money for is, we need to drill wells in our 536-acre well field. It's approximately $8 million to drill the wells and run the pipe to bring it in. We need to add an eight-inch water line on Alexander and Ollie from Long to Sloan, which is a cost of about 416,000. We need to add a variable frequency drive for the airport pump station, which is about 100,000. And this money would also, could also be utilized for upsizing water and sewer lines and new developments to prepare for future growth. When I talk about that is when somebody comes in and they're going to do a subdivision, and we say, okay, you have to have an eight-inch water line. But if we know there's going to be development past that, we might decide to pay the difference and go ahead and put a 12-inch water line in, and us pay the difference. And that's the kind of thing that this money could be utilized for. In addition, the funds can assist in performing our basin non-sewer evaluations, which costs us about $65,000 a year. One thing that I, I did come across when I was going through the ordinance, we have the ordinance attached, when we were going through all of the rates and changing $1.50 to each one of the base rates, when I got to the multifamily billing for our sewer, I couldn't make the math work. So the way that, that the fee schedule says is they're supposed to be charged 70% of the, the revenue, the, of the number of living units. So you would actually just say 70% of the rate. Well, we showed 840 on the fee schedule, but it, that's not 70%. I got a little worried there for a minute, thinking that we were overcharging people. So I called our utility billing clerk that's been here for about 17, 18 years and said, explain this to me, because I don't understand. So when we looked at it, actually, what we were charging those is $5.88, which is 70% of the 840. So the math wasn't working on that. Those, those multifamily billings will actually go up from the 588 to the 875. I just wanted to bring that out to be transparent, in that they have been undercharged since this rate came in, in '04, from what I can tell. There's not a whole lot of records that explains the calculation of how they come there. We do the same thing on sewer. That one was correct. It's 965, I mean, 950, 70%, 70% of that is the 665. So that's why I believe that the rate that was in the system was put in incorrectly when it was done 2004. Is there any questions on any of these numbers? On any of these methods?
So, numbers are, you know, they don't, you, you have to see them. Is, I know you've put together a nice package for us. Is this available for folks to go and look at? I mean, is this on the city website?
It's not currently. I can, well, this, this package here is, because it was all in the...
City Council.
Yes, yes. So it was all in the agenda, but we can put it separately as well.
What we can do is, we can feature it on the website itself. We can put a, like a news link or something to it. To find it now, you'd have to go to the council, download the packet, and look through the packet for it. But we'll make sure that happens, won't we, Karen?
And, and the plan is, whatever council decides tonight, the fee schedule will be updated. It will be updated on the website. I'd already talked with my staff about us using social media to get with Karen and Stacy about putting something on social media to let people know what it is, and then also updating our, I believe it's Channel 19, to put that on there, so that people are fully aware of how the rates are going to change, whatever council decides tonight.
Any help, Mark?
So I, I would just, I'd just make a comment, really. For the, for the first time, really, we're making an attempt to run the enterprise fund, which is a business, it's, it's intended to be operated like a business. We're actually trying to set rates and, and volume charges that, that reflect the true costs associated with providing the services. Is that a pretty accurate description?
That is what my attempt was. Yes, sir.
Okay. So we're trying to operate this as a business, a business that can sustain itself and maintain itself over time, and have money available for routine maintenance, replacement, repair of existing stuff, and a little bit of seed money for, for future growth and development.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I wanted to say that I'm sure all of us got emails and calls about the surcharge, and I appreciate your efforts on fixing that issue, or dealing with that issue. So I appreciate that. And you're right, Mark, it is an enterprise, and that's the part we haven't done a good job of. You know, we keep, we, we hide from that issue by borrowing money. And right now, that's, costs us, how much is our debt service right now a year? About $2 million?
About $2 million.
1.92 million dollars.
Yes, we're spending nearly $2 million a year paying off loans for stuff that we should have been doing all along through the service, service charges of some kind. So I appreciate the work you did on this. Any other discussion?
I have a comment.
Yes, ma'am.
I appreciate it too, because I can tell how much work you put into it. And I kept asking you about it. And, and I'm just, I'm, I'm going to put Nick on the spot, but Nick texted me last week after this, and he said, I use, with three children, he uses the 12,000 gallons before he even gets to summer and watering his yard. And I think this compromise allows people to still be very careful with how much they're watering, but they can at least water their yard and not leave it brown for the summer because they can't afford their water. And I think this is a great compromise on the surcharge, and, and it brings us additional income of 50 to $100,000 maybe, so, thank you.
Anybody else?
I guess I might throw one more comment in there, Mayor. It also corrects some of the inequities that we've had in the past inadvertently, but it still, it seeks to correct some of those and make the playing field, so to speak, a little more level.
So the motion will be Resolution 2019-0... 17?
16.
16. I'm always asking. All right, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion that we approve. My, my machine timed out, so I don't have...
Ordinance number 2019-016.
Ordinance number 2019-016. Thank you.
Carla makes the motion, and Alan seconds the motion. Any further discussion? Proceed to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much, Monica, for your hard work, Nick as well, the work y'all did. Maybe we can get, get our heads full of water now. That's what we do now. Thank you.
That's the end of the Finance Committee report, sir.
Thank you, sir. Okay, the next item on the agenda is a consent agenda. Did I hear a motion?
We approve this consent agenda as presented.
Mark makes the motion to accept the consent agenda as presented. Did I hear a second?
Second.
I'm going to bring you back to the second.
You've been so quiet, you need to do something.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign opposed? Motion passes, subject to consent agenda. Comments by city manager?
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. We'll have a meeting on May 14th at 5:30 PM to canvass the May 4th election. There'll also be a community reception welcoming the incoming councilmen and thanking the outgoing council members. We have a work session on May 16th. Just for the clarification of that, that would have normally been our committee meetings, but since committees aren't assigned until June, we're going to do it as a whole council workshop this time. We have a, an employee compensation plan work session on May 23rd at 5:30 PM. Representatives from MAG will be here to discuss that with council. City offices will be closed for Memorial Day on May 27. Regular council meeting is Tuesday, June 4th. And I do want to remind everybody that we have Mulan Fest May 31st and June 1st, and it is going to be a heck of a time.
And sunny.
Oh, I was just advised to tell you, we also, on the 16th, after the, or either before or after the work session, will have a special council meeting with two items on it.
Okay. Mark?
Okay, I want to, I want to piggyback on, on Mulan Fest. It's, it's going to be a great event for the city of Stevensville. It comes up at the end of the month. It's a, kind of a combo event. We're going to celebrate National Dairy Month, which is June, and with it, and combo that with a first-time event in Stevensville, a balloon festival. And what I want to do is encourage everybody, what we need are a bunch of bright, smiling faces that are willing to serve the community as ambassadors. Julie Smith is looking for a lot of volunteers. And so if you have a, some desire or willingness to serve, I think there's information on the, on the city website. You can contact Julie. She can get you in, in touch with the, the tourism board, who's coordinating the volunteers. But we need a lot of folks out. There's going to be tons of different areas that you can volunteer, something for everybody to do. And we're there to welcome our visitors. A lot of them, a lot of them will be first-time visitors to Stevensville, and we want them to, to really have a great time. It's going to be a good deal. There'll be another opportunity later in the year, when the Wall that Heels comes to town. That's going to be a very solemn event. There'll be a lot of volunteers needed for that event as well. Julie can probably help you out with that. And I just want to say, since this is the last regular meeting, Sherri, you have been a dedicated servant of the city and citizens of Stevensville for a long time. And by dedicated, what I mean is you have freely given your time, time away from your business operations, your personal time, to attend a wide variety and a large number of meetings where, where city business was being discussed. I appreciate that. I think you've done it the right way, and it's my hope that we've got some of the incoming members here. I hope that they'll look to the example that you've set and try to emulate that. I appreciate your service, ma'am. I wish you nothing but the best in what comes your way.
Well, Mark, thank you very much, and I really do appreciate that. Thank you. It's, it's been an honor, it really has, and a learning experience, to say the least. But thank you.
I'm going to piggyback on everybody else, but I do want to encourage volunteers, because if you are a volunteer, you get a one-of-a-kind Mulan t-shirt, that you will be very proud, and nobody else will have those t-shirts except for the volunteers. Do you remember what they say? They say something really unique on them. They are cool t-shirts. You will want one. So be a volunteer and, and, and get one of those t-shirts. I did want to thank, Karen's here. I want to thank Karen Wilkerson for all her hard work on this, as well as Julie and Jen Basham, because they've really worked diligently the entire year, almost, to get this event to fruition. So thank you so much for your hard work. And I also wanted to thank Sherri and Rhett, because I will not be here next week when you're sworn in. I will be out of town. But thank you so much. It's been a pleasure, so.
Thank you, Carla. Thank you.
Mayor, briefly, I want to echo what Carla and Mark have said. It's, it's, it's been a unique, interesting, and enjoyable experience, sitting next to you, and I would like to thank you for your time, having been here and recognizing, as you do, what a sacrifice it is from the business that, that we could be in and should be in sometimes. And sometimes it suffers because we're not there, but I want to thank you for that, and I know how diligently you've worked and how hard, how hard and how much effort you've put into it, and how well you've served the city of Stevensville, and I believe we're a better place for that, and I want to thank you for that, and I appreciate that.
Well, I, I, thank you. I should have prepared something, because, you know, but I really do appreciate it. You know, getting to know everybody has been an experience, and I've, I've made friends, I hope, on the council, and, and as well as, and we've all butted heads, but we've all gotten along, and I think that right there, honestly, is the biggest thing that we all, we should take home, is that you can disagree and agree to disagree and still get along and get the city's business done in a speedy and timely manner, and that, that is something I have really appreciated about this council, is that, that we've all, we've all worked hard to keep the train going forward. So thank you all very, very much, and thank you for your kind words, everybody. Appreciate it a lot. Means a lot.
I'll, I will just say, since Sherri's here, thank you for your service. It's been an honor to sit next to you, and I appreciate the many years that you've served the city, and I'm sure you'll still be giving us your input, so, we appreciate it.
There's always those letters to the editor.
Letters that are, keep giving your input. And with that, I will say, congratulations to a couple of the new guys that are here that'll be joining the council, and I will say that we had about 8% of the elected electorate show up to vote. So I appreciate you guys here that are engaged. We need more people engaged, and I'll continue to make that plea, come to city councils, come to seat at meetings. There's a lot of exciting stuff happening here, a lot of what I think is really good things, and we, you live here, you want to raise your family here, be involved, so, but that's all I got. that's all I got.
Thank you. Citizens, Mulawest will rival Albuquerque, New Mexico, so be sure you're here. It's going to be a big event. Is that, that's what Carla told me. Sherri and Rhett-
We can always hope.
That's right. I, I thank you for your work.
Because this is the first annual.
That's right, first annual. Sherri and Rhett, I'll reserve my comments for next week. I've got several. I want to say something to do, I think, I also want to thank you. Only item I have to bring up is that tomorrow is the, is a breakfast at Grand Street Church Christ Family Center, starts 6:45 to 7:45. It's, it's hosted by myself and Dwayne Bruner. It's a fundraiser for the Boy Scouts. Everyone's, if you're, if you haven't been personally, call, I'm going to invite you to come, you'll be my guest. Be there tomorrow at 6:45, 7:45. Last year, I think we raised, Julie's not here, I think it was like 13,000 or 14,000 dollars. And it's a first annual event, so, Mayor's Breakfast, I appreciate that very much. So tomorrow morning at 6:45, show up and be ready to open your checkbook, we need the help. Anything else? Are there any other items? We're going to stand adjourned at 6:42.
What are you cooking?
You know?